Regular meeting for the Lomita Planning Commission to order. It's Monday, April 10th, 2022, and I welcome everybody to the chambers. And before we start, we'll do a flag salute. Commissioner Santos, if you would lead us in that, please.
Please rise, please drink. Throw your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Right to you. So it looks like we have a full commission. So if you would like to do the roll call real quick for the beginning of the meeting, Deputy City Clerk.
Yes, thank you, Chair Camerata. Commissioner Dever.
Here.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Here.
Commissioner Santos.
Here.
Commissioner Steinbach.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Vice Chair Grab.
Here.
And Chair Camerata.
Here.
All present?
First item is item number two, oral communications. Any persons wishing to address the Planning Commission on subjects other than those scheduled or requested to do so at this time, please provide your name and address for the record. In order to conduct a timely meeting, a three-minute time limit has been established. Do we have anybody in the audience that has submitted any cards or wishes to speak? So seeing none, we will push on. Item number three, consent agenda. Tonight, we're going to approve the minutes from March 13th, 2023. And instead of doing a roll call, since we're all in person, I will ask for a motion to -- actually, we don't need a motion, we can just approve it. So all in favor of the minutes from March 13th, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, say nay. Okay, that motion carries.
You can still, excuse me, Chair Camerata, you can still do a motion in a second for these, but then just all in favor, say aye.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, thank you.
I thought it was a consent agenda. Okay, so let me just go back to that real quick. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from March 13th?
Move.
Okay, so moved and seconded. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Okay. We will move on to item number four. We have quite a few public hearings. First one is 4A. It's an amendment of a conditional use permit number 224 for 1935 Pacific Coast Highway in the commercial retail CR zone, and that the finding for the action to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. The applicant is Toji Okura, on behalf of Tamiyan Japanese Barbecue, 1935 PCH in Lomita, presented by Assistant Planner Barbero. And if we could have that presentation?
Thank you, Chair. Give me one moment.
If the city clerk could put the -- yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Tonight, I'll be presenting amendments to CUP 224 at 1935 and 1937 Pacific Coast Highway. The applicant is Toji Okura for Tamiyan Japanese Barbecue. Again, it is an amendment to existing CUP 224 to extend beer and wine sales to unit 1937 for onsite consumption. The restaurant is located at the northwest corner of Lomita Village Shopping Center. The shopping center is 90,000 square feet, and it's a three-multi-tenant building. And the suite that the establishment will be taking over was a former massage establishment. Here, we have two images of where the site is located. We have our map and aerial. According to our general plan, this area is located or is zone for commercial, or is commercial, and there are commercial uses located at this location. Adjacent uses are residential and commercial. And according to our zoning, this area is designated commercial retail, and the commercial general are adjacent in addition to residential. Here, we have a site plan of the entire vicinity of Lomita Village. The image you see here is in front of the establishment. It's actually right off to the corner to the left, and nature spas where the applicant is requesting to extend their beer and wine sales. Here is the back area where there's additional parking for patrons and adjacent businesses within the shopping center. We have our existing floor plan and the proposed floor plan for when the establishment takes over to the neighboring suite. The accommodation, again, is to expand beer and wine sales for onsite consumption to 1937 PCH. Their current hours of operation are from 5:30 to 9:30 every day, for the exception of Wednesdays. Those days, they are closed. Our findings for this report are that alcohol consumption is permitted in this zone. There are sensitive uses located in the vicinity of this establishment. There is Veterans Park within the 300-foot radius, in addition to residential properties right behind the establishment. However, there is a six-foot block wall separating the parking lot, separating the parking lot and the homes behind the establishment. And according to the Sheriff's Department, there have not been any calls made to this location. There are only two other restaurants within the shopping center that offer sit-down dining services. This one will just create additional options for Lomita residents. Because the use will be intensified, we do recognize that there will be sufficient parking to accommodate the increased use, or the, yes, the increased, you know, number of patrons coming onsite, and there is sufficient circulation coming in and out of the shopping center, because it is located right at the corner of Eschelman, or by Eschelman and PCH. So for our conditions of approval, we are asking that crimes are reported to LA sheriffs, as always. The floor plan that is provided, we need to see actual dining, a dining situation, you know, presented to planning. They do need to acquire building permits in order to make any other, any improvements to the space. And in order, they must acquire a certificate of occupancy prior to actually utilizing it and allowing service in that area. The business must remain close to customers by 10:00, Sunday through Thursday, and 11:00 on Friday through Saturday. So options this evening are to approve the resolution as recommended, approve with amended conditions, deny the application, or provide staff with further direction. Thank you.
Does any commissioner have any questions for staff at this time? We'll start off. Monica?
No.
Brenda?
No.
Mike?
No.
Joaquin?
I do not, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Bob?
No, thank you.
Henry?
No.
Okay. We'll now begin the public comment portion of the hearing. All questions shall be directed to the commission. Is the applicant present? If you would like to approach the podium and give your name for the record and present your --
Yes, my name is Toji Okura. Address is 1419 West 179th Street, Unit Number 10, Gardena, California 90248. And I'm representing Tamiyan BBQ Restaurants. To expand the neighborhood unit, yeah.
Okay. Anything else you want to say? I think it was a pretty good report.
I think everything is sorted.
Okay. All right. So if there's any questions from the commissioners for the applicant? Monica?
No.
Brenda?
No.
Mike?
Yes. All right. Are your business hours going to remain as what they are now, 5:30 to 9:30, or are you changing business hours?
Well, right now, it's pretty much same.
It's going to stay the same?
It's the same, yes.
Do you anticipate maybe opening for lunch or anything? Just curious.
It might be in the future, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Joaquin? Bob, any questions? Henry?
Yeah, the configuration you have for your restaurant as it is now? Is this room going to become like that? I mean, you're going to have the same kind of arrangements with the tables and whatnot? Is that what your plan is?
We will not have like a barbecue table, like existing restaurants, but we're going to add some more tables on the additional areas. So it's not like cooking the, like, food at the table.
Okay.
It's just the table itself.
And those are going to be natural gas-type burners?
We won't have no, like, gas.
None of that?
No.
Okay. Okay. All right. It is. Yeah, that's it. That's all I have. I just want to know the, kind of how he was going to plan to use the room, that's all.
Okay. Do you have any other questions, comments? Okay. If not, I thank you. And bring it back to the commissioners for their final thoughts and comments. If anybody has any other questions? If not, I'll close the public comment portion, and we will take a vote on --
Sorry, may I? Should I say it's online?
Oh, online, okay. I forget we have people online, okay.
It takes a minute to --
Can I have one more question?
Okay. Is it for the applicant or staff?
The facility that a person was occupying, the one restroom is ADA-approved, right? So is that other restroom required to be ADA-approved? And that, I know it's part of the hospital, it's part of the restaurant, but maybe not needed because of the size? But I'm wondering, does it have to be?
I'll answer. Yes, ABC requires two handicap-accessible bathrooms. So if it's not, it'll have to be upgraded with its other tenant improvements.
Okay. So have we, has anybody looked at that to see if it's ADA-able, meet that?
That wouldn't have been done yet. That would be at the time when they apply, we inspect for a stick of it occupancy.
Okay, good enough. Thank you.
Okay. So seeing no further questions or comments, I'd like to ask for a motion to --
Someone.
Okay.
I'll say it.
So there's a motion and a second to approve conditional use permit number 224. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Okay, that motion carries. We will move on to 4B. Thank you. 4B is a minor conditional use permit number four for off-site parking agreement between 24805 Narbonne Avenue and 24716 through 24730 Narbonne Avenue in the commercial general zone with an MUO, which is a mixed-use overlay district, and finding the action to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. The applicant is Ferrana LLC, 23910 Narbonne Avenue, Unit 101, Lomita, California 90717. And the presentation will be by Associate Planner McMoran. So Laura, if you would do a staff report, please.
Good evening, Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. And thank you. So Ferrana LLC is, Art Heshai is a part of that company, and he is here on behalf of Endocrine Care Specialists, who, that is a medical practice, and they would like to continue operations at 24805 Narbonne Avenue, which is the Brownstone Project at the corner of 248th Street and Narbonne Avenue. The space is a 2,700-square-foot commercial unit with nine parking spaces, and the project for the site also has 11 dwelling units and four live-work units with 34 parking spaces. The residential is not at all a part of this application. I'm just giving that for context. And so what they're proposing is to use the 2,700-square-foot commercial area, but it needs 12 parking spaces. And so looking, there's been an off-site relationship temporary for the last year with Bay Church. And here we have a picture of this corner unit. It's at the corner of 248th and Narbonne. So as mentioned, again, the three spaces are off-site. This is the first time we've been talking about an off-site shared parking relationship agreement. We had one in past history with, believe it or not, the Albertson's site, because there was different property owners than the building. And what they did was they went for a variance. So this is why our MCUP is actually a much better tool for us, because to make a, it really is an odd variance to have. So we have now a conditional use permit tying both properties, and it's about the use, not changing our standards. We've created better standards to evaluate it on, so. So as mentioned, you know, medical office is a permitted use in the mixed-use overlay district with a commercial general designation, as well as with the land use designation. So here is an image of the church from the office space, you know. It's an eyesight right now. You know, they are going forward with their redevelopment plans for the site. And, but here is the back on Woodward, and they are keeping, their plan is to keep this parking lot area open while they're under construction. And then you can see, this was a shot this morning on Woodward. Despite the construction on Monday morning, there's still some breathing room for on-street So when looking at a shared parking agreement, one of the criteria is to evaluate whether or not the demand is going to be staggered, or it's going to be simultaneous. And here we can see the medical office is open from 8:00 to 5:00 a.m., Mondays through Fridays, period. They are closed in the evening, they're closed on weekends, whereas the Bay Church is very inactive. I mean, they don't have anything scheduled in the morning, nor does there's a small-tenant church. On Mondays and weeknights, they have some programming. On Saturdays, of course, you know, there's traditional things such as weddings happening, and on Sundays is when the churches are open, but the medical office is closed. Some of you may recall, this is the site plan that was approved for the church's redevelopment. And while we're leaving it between the landlord and, or the church and the medical office, you can see they've increased the parking supply onsite considerably, and, you know, taking three spaces during the day out of the mix should be, should not affect in any way the surrounding community. The distance is approximately 280 feet. And what we have here is I've measured to the northerly portion of the church's property, and then to the front door, which says staffing entrance, to the medical office. So again, the MCUP has special findings, and the first is, do the, is there a peak demand that occurs simultaneously, or do the operating hours differ? And we see that they differ substantially, that there's really good overlap. It's actually optimizing that parking spaces, which more than likely will sit dormant most of the time. Will the quantity circulation and location of parking, will it equal the level expected if this was not an arrangement made? And absolutely, we don't see the circulation changing, the driveways and the way vehicles will be coming out of for, you know, these three vehicles is not going to change the paths of travel for anyone else who's using the parking lot at the same time they might be. We don't see nearby properties being affected, and that is really because the hours of operation differ. We have not received any comments or calls from anyone who received a notice about this, or the, you know, anyone in the public who saw the signs posted. Back to the circulation, there should be nothing detrimental on the public's health. You know, there's a stop sign on 248th, and then there's a left-turn lane on Narbonne Avenue. And last finding here is that the off-site parking is within 300 feet or a suitable distance to, to the proposed, to the use requesting the off-site parking. So staff's recommending that the Planning Commission approve three shared off-site parking spaces from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, and that's just, again, for breathing room for staffing. And then to find the project categorically exempt from CEQA. The commission has this always four options: approve the resolution as recommended, approve the resolution with amended conditions, deny the application, or provide staff with further direction. I can answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Laura, for that presentation and staff report. Does any commissioner have any questions for staff at this time? Monica?
No, thank you.
Okay, Brenda?
Yeah, I do. Laura, do you need 12 parking spots because of the size of the building they're moving into?
Yeah, it's a great question. So medical offices have a higher parking ratio in our code. It's one space for every 225 square feet. When this, the Brownstone was developed, it was proposed as just a general office, and that's at a parking ratio of one space for every 300 square feet. So the difference is, they need three additional parking spaces to meet our code.
Okay. And then the other question is, the parking spot at the church would be employee parking over there?
We can't, you know, we can't monitor this, but absolutely. That is what the applicant has said in their letter, that, or the business has said, they intend for their employees to park there, and it's in their, their business's best interest so that they can serve the needs of, you know, having close and convenient parking for their patients to come into the office.
Okay, and then just one other thing. Since the church parking, I mean, would this not be up to the church to okay?
They have, they've signed the application. They've sent us an email. They've had an existing relationship with them, so, yes. And they will be signing a shared parking agreement as well. That is a condition of approval.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mike, any questions?
The conditions of the permit, or the cup. So those, that is controlled by property or by owner? I mean, of each? So I mean, what if one sold or something? Does it pass with that sale, or?
Yeah. So we have, there's two things. There's the shared parking agreement, which will be a recorded document, and then the other is our own minor conditional use permit, which we have in our records, are in perpetuity. Until, I mean, they can extinguish it, and they'd have to come back through the city. But, you know, yes, it will be, both will have eyes on it, and title will have eyes on it.
Okay. Lastly, is there any requirement for any signage for additional parking at that property or anything like that, since there's not enough onsite proper, onsite parking?
We didn't put any signage requirement into the resolution, primarily because it's so highly likely that these spaces, the employees are going to be using these for their, you know, full-day parking, that it's, and we probably don't want the public, or their customer, their patients, using more than their fair share.
Right.
Right, at the church? So it wasn't included. It's something the commission can always consider.
No, I concur with what you're saying about the fact that anybody could just slip in there if they saw the sign. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Joaquin?
No questions.
Bob, anything?
Yes. So I think CUP in this scenario was spot-on perfect, especially with churches. I mean, we've heard our fair share of complaints about churches and neighborhoods, you know, the value back and forth. This is perfect. Glad to see that we're doing this. So my question is going to refine a little bit more on what Mike was saying. So what triggers it in the sale of, say, for instance, a church decides that they're going to change their operation and their hours, or they're going to put it in a school or anything that would now affect this? So if we have these conditions of approval in there, which they are a party to, what is the trigger for you? How does it pop up? I know it's kind of a housekeeping question, but...
So intensifying use becomes potentially subject to discretionary review. They have first and foremost a site plan review on file with us, and that it's for the use of the property in a certain manner. And so this is part of their, I want to just say their, I don't want to say resume, but of, they have site plan, the church itself has the site plan review, and so if someone was to go on to redevelop it, or they were wanting to expand, they have to come back to us, and we would evaluate that new request with its baseline. And the baseline includes the initial site plan review and this MCUP.
So there's a database, in other words, that has this in it, that as soon as that address pops up, it's going to be thrown up in front of you. And here's the reason I say this. Just in my experience, is when you have this attractive parking lot, right in the middle of downtown here, all of a sudden, businesses are going, hey, I didn't know we could do that. And it's great. I mean, if it works for the church, that's great. But then I've also seen situations where they slip through the cracks, and pretty soon you've given out more parking spaces than you have to give out. And I think, and the medical office thing, I get, because you have patients and people in the queue. It's a very precise thing. It's easy to monitor, but you could have a restaurant situation, or... So I just, I just want to know, and I'll use the brewery for example, that parking lot that's right there, that's for everybody to use, right? Well, it just, it packs up instantaneously, because a lot of people are using it. So I just don't want it to get to the point where it gets the church in a bad spot because there's too many people using it, because people are going to use it when they're not there anyway. Right? At night?
I mean, the church is like any private property owner, where they would, you know, if they had neighbors who were on their private property that they did not have an agreement with, they could have them removed. But for the city's purposes, we keep records and we'll keep counts, so we're not double-dipping or creating so much intense use on that parking lot that it doesn't serve its primary that it doesn't serve its primary requirement. I think this is a way that we are optimizing the land that is otherwise inactive, and land is really a scarce resource, especially in a developed community. So, you know, using it on its days off, I mean, it's...
I have complete confidence in the, in the fact that you guys are going to do this. I just think it needs to be said in this forum so that everybody that's listening, watching, and everybody up here understands that you have that ability to keep, to keep track of that. And then I have one more question, I'll make that one quick. Crosswalk situation there? You know, I walk it every day and I don't notice a crosswalk, there's not a crosswalk there, right?
There is not a crosswalk there. There are, there's a stoplight to the south at 250th, there's a crosswalk at 247th. But at any, I should say painted crosswalk. But pedestrians can cross per state law, and vehicles are supposed to yield.
I don't think they know that, I don't think the drivers or the people know that, but... Yeah, yeah, so, well, anyway. Just throwing it out there.
Thank you.
I will just interject very quickly to Bob's point. I believe as one of the conditions, 11C is what we're referring to, Bob. Where it says remedies in the event there's a change in the use of property. So it sounds like that's already been ingrained into your checkoff list for them to happen. The other, very quickly, is any of the paperwork for this is to be reviewed by, I believe, Mr. David King. And have you got any comments on this at all, or have you seen anything, or do you have anything that?
Are you referring to the shared parking agreement?
Yeah.
We're working on it.
Okay, perfect, okay. All right, Henry, any questions? Okay, okay, good. Okay. And then my only other comment was, I hate to have people run across the street and get hit by a car, but I guess they'll be smart enough to figure that out. So, okay, so with that being said, with that being said, do any commissioners have any disclosures to make? I meant to ask that earlier. Monica, anything?
No.
No, Brenda? Mike? Joaquin?
Yes, sir.
Bob? Henry? Okay. We'll now start the public comment portion. Is the applicant present? Mr. Ashai, if you'd like to come up to the podium and give us your presentation, please.
Hi, my name is Artashai, 23910 Narbonne Avenue, Lomita. Laura actually covered everything, so I'll just answer any questions you have. But I just want to clarify that the parking, they have had this agreement between the medical office and the church for the past year almost, and the only people that park in the church is the staff. And the way they have done it is they have given them three parking tags to be given to their staff to hang on the car so they know it belongs to the medical office. They say if they don't have a tag, they're going to tow them away.
Okay, perfect.
And that works well.
And, and your experience, nothing's happened to that degree in the last?
Nothing at all.
12 months?
It works great.
Okay, good. Okay, very good. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant, Monica? Brenda? Mike?
No.
Joaquin? Bob? Henry? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome, okay. We will close the public hearing portion, and I guess if there's no other comments or questions, we can bring it back to the commission, unless there's any other comments. I would ask for a motion on this item number 4B.
Second.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second to approve minor conditional use permit number four for off-site parking between 24805 Narbonne Avenue and the church at 24716 through 24730 Narbonne Avenue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Okay, we're good to go. Thank you. And we will go on to item 4C, which will be discussion and consideration of a zone text amendment number 2023-03, an ordinance of the Lomita Municipal Code Title 11 for Planning and Zoning, Chapter 1 zoning, Article 68, Special Development and Standards, section, specifically a section 11.1.68.06, outdoor dining, to update the outdoor dining regulations and findings that the action is to be exempt from California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA. So the applicant is the city of Lomita, and who is going to be making this? Community and Economic Director Brianna Ringe. So if you would give us our staff report?
Good evening, Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Yes, the item actually came before you two months ago on your February 13th meeting, and you all said, yes, let's move forward, let's get an ordinance going, because there are several businesses who have had outdoor dining provided through the COVID, in a form of COVID relief. And that, as you know, the executive orders have ceased, and it's time to start enforcing how Lomita would like to enforce in the long term, not just under COVID, COVID allowances. So there are a few businesses in the city that have outdoor dining. Some of them are in compliance, some of them are not. And so upon adoption, should you and city council decide to adopt the ordinance, we would do a whole code enforcement outreach kind of materials. We'd email everyone we have, send a letter to everyone we have when it comes to the restaurants, letting them know whether they have outdoor dining or not, letting them know, hey, these are going to be the new rules. The new rules are, they're more permissive, the current code is actually pretty restrictive. But it does provide more provisions as, as it relates to things like heaters and how close they are located. So just to reiterate, these are, outdoor dining is already permitted in the city code. And this code would require still an encroachment permit for any right-of-way outdoor dining that remains as is in the proposed ordinance. In addition, our CUP requirements, if somebody chooses to expand to outdoor dining and it includes alcoholic, service of alcoholic beverages, such as our first applicant tonight, although that was only indoors, but any expanse of it would require the CUP amendment, should their CUP be specific to the locations it's currently allowed. And second is, just like our second applicant, if they wish to take over any of the parking spaces with outdoor dining, they would have to go through the MCUP application. Both of those applications go before your board. So just this, these changes are really only effectuating, well, it's providing the avenue in which they can go through, any business owner can go through a addition of outdoor dining or bringing into compliance their existing outdoor dining. But it does not change what comes before you. So sorry to mention, we do advance outreach to businesses. We are, okay. Computer's trying to reboot, that's not good. So it's just going to slide through some examples found around town, not our town, but multiple other towns. And so we will be doing Founder's Day, will kind of be the last weekend, right after this goes into effect. So that following week after Founder's Day, we'll be doing outreach at it, and that would be when we'll have a code enforcement officer there, again, in a friendly manner, saying, hey, just want to let you know, this, this is the new ordinance, you can do this now. You just have to go through the motions basically to allow it. Some of them, of course, are already good to go as they are, because they did already obtain the correct permits. So not going to read the staff report verbatim, just a few things that are required for a business to have outdoor dining. Pretty obviously requires a full kitchen in the business, so this won't be people standing out with alcoholic drinks there without food. It's purely tables, it is heaters that are allowed, umbrellas that are allowed without advertisements. And it has a lot of provisions in there for the cleanliness of the area as well, not only on private property, but in any public right-of-way that's taken up for this as well. And just to be clear, the city code as proposed does bifurcate public right-of-way outdoor dining with private outdoor dining, because in public right-of-way, everything like in the picture here must be removable. It's not to say the owners must remove these chairs and everything every night, but just in case of emergency and public works needs to get in there to fix a utility or something, or there's some street incident, it has the ability for these to be moved. But private property could be totally permanent upon approval. So that completes my presentation, available for questions.
Okay, thank you. Does any commissioner have any questions for Brianna? Monica?
No.
Brenda? Mike?
Just a little bit of question, information on my part. With regard to how it is going to be, I guess, permitted, is it kind of like what Burning Daylight did with that? And they have to come, come to the, to get approval?
Yeah, so that one, just, you know, before my time here, they have a CUP for their alcohol sales and onsite consumption, of course. And for some reason in that CUP, it didn't restrict the locations of the outdoor dining. And so, I mean, I guess by way of site plan review at the time, it did restrict them, just not through this type of process. And it, but it, it actually, in effect, becomes the same process because it still comes before you. But this is specifically supposed to be for, or not supposed to be, but supposed to allow this expansion through the conditional use permit amendment. Now, we have made sure that going forward, every single application, you've had a restaurant tonight, does restrict in this, in the ordinance, or excuse me, in the resolution where this can occur. But it just so happens at that one, and probably some others too, it doesn't restrict where. So they didn't have to go through the CUP amendment, but they did have to go through the site plan review because of that structure. And that goes the same with anyone else. You know, we, as you saw in the ordinance, temporary tents won't be allowed, of course, unless it's part of a special event, which requires a separate permit. But if they want to put in a permanent structure, like Burning Daylight has gotten approved, they would go through that site plan review process.
Thank you.
Okay, Joaquin, any questions?
Yes, sir. You mentioned the parking, they would have increased parking for that. So how do you calculate parking for the, you don't use the same square footage that you would for the restaurant, would you?
No, it's actually already in our city code, a specific ratio for outdoor dining. I can't think of what it is off the top of my head.
As long as it's different.
It is, yes.
Because it's 100%. Yeah, okay.
I want to say it's one space for every 150 square feet, but don't quote me.
Thanks.
Henry?
Yeah. You have quite a long list of requirements for this, for the outdoor dining. How are we going to enforce it?
So we have our code enforcement team, right now it's one and a half individuals. Not only is this something that we have already, you know, kind of have a log for, but we're waiting to enforce until an ordinance is adopted and COVID's kind of really lifted. But it's purely through code enforcement and any approved permits. So if you have a right-of-way encroachment permit for right-of-way dining, it's subject to the conditions of approval of that. Same with if they go through an MCUP to put dining on where parking is right now.
Okay, so some of these will take place, I'm guessing, you can correct me if I'm wrong, will take place after business hours. You know what I mean by us having our staff here? And at that time, how are we going to enforce their, to continue to operate according to the rules? Because as a fireman, I had problems myself and people following the rules at night especially.
I really appreciate that question, because as you may know, we had one code enforcement officer the past year or so, and starting January 30th is when we got that half-time contract, part-time code enforcement officer. And she's been able to come on weekends, evenings, and be able to enforce things that the city hasn't enforced specifically recently. So that's something we'd like to continue to do, and this would certainly be lumped into that.
Okay, so if we get complaints, because that's the only way I knew they were breaking the rules, is through complaints, people would call, and then I'd have to go check. So do we have any process or using anything that, if people have a number to call if there's a?
We do.
They'll call the sheriffs, I know, and that's how they did, then they throw it at us, and then we have to go look at it. Now, is this going to affect our fire department at all?
So it's the same process, you know, if you see someone with some other violation, can't think off the top of my head, unpermitted construction, if you see that and you report to the city in the same way that if you see one of these outdoor dining spaces being utilized at 3:00 AM. You, you can either send the email, go to the online portal, call City Hall, leave a message, what city staff does, because that is how we've been operating with other businesses that have restricted hours, with our new officer who's been there in the evenings and weekends, is she says, okay, this happened on Wednesday night at 3:00 AM, I'm going to come here this Wednesday. So they do that. If something does implicate the fire department, we'd certainly be in contact.
Okay, and also, is there a, you have any mechanism to say you have so many times you can violate, and then we're going to pull your permit?
Well, if they're found in violation, they are supposed to not use it at all. They have to come into compliance immediately.
Okay, but, but we can pull their permit, because they'll have a permit still, and they can violate it, but do we have any mechanism to pull their permit if they get, say, five violations?
Yeah.
Five complaints, and, and it's, and it's proven they violated the permit?
So that I, that's something in past cities I've worked in, we had where every year, every CUP, including what would be an MCP here, everything like that was reviewed annually.
Right.
One of the provisions being, you know, have there been any complaints and things like that? Or has a business expanded without notifying the city? We would go to visit every city. The city doesn't have that. It's something that I thought about when I came, and, you know, basically CUPs get passed on owner to owner to owner, so, but for applied 50 years ago, their restrictions are the same as whoever owns the business now, unless they come back to the city. So that's something that we can certainly take direction.
It's just something to think about, because it does happen. And, you know, it's, it puts the burden back on us to make sure they follow their permit process. And people, when they get extra people that show up, they tend to do things they shouldn't do.
Yeah, they, they would be closed down if they're found out of compliance.
Especially at night, when there's really nobody policing them, you know, so.
I appreciate that.
Just something to think about. Thank you. Question for the city attorney then?
I was about to say, yeah, I'm going to ask David.
So wouldn't we have to infractionalize the code? So it, I'm only, just my experience, so if they're, if they're in violation, all they have to do is bring it in and compliance. We're, we're not in a position to fine people, only courts can fine. Unless I'm, unless I'm wrong, unless we've infractionalized that particular violation in a progressive manner, am I correct?
So we, it's the same code enforcement process for any violations, such as unpermitted work. Notice, obviously, things are a health and safety immediate threat, must be addressed immediately. If there's something like an umbrella with advertisement on it, like any other code enforcement, code enforced item, it goes first notice of violation, second notice of violation, first administrative fine, second administrative fine, third administrative fine, which do escalate per the, what the council's adopted. And at that point, there's further legal action. So I guess that kind of actually really...
We would just, we would take care of it ourselves, because we always had a relationship with the owners of the business.
That's exactly the intent, as a friendly city. Yep.
Okay, so are you good with your questions? All right, so we're going to run it back again, so Monica, you have a question?
Do we have something like that with the massage parlors? We would catch them, they would come in for breaking whatever it was, the permit, and they would pay cash, and then they'd go back and do the same thing, and then they get caught again, and they would come in and pay cash? Isn't that kind of the same thing, right?
Any code violation that could be, if it's not something that's an immediate threat to life safety, like unpermitted work, we'd put a stop work order on until they come in and get the correct permits. But like that type of business, any business operating outside of the confines of what they are permitted to, they could come in, pay, come and pay, but that does escalate first, first notice, verbal written, second notice, and then first site, second site, third site, further legal action.
Okay, so I'm going to go back, I believe Bob had the question about the parking. So in one of the conditions, it's mentioned here, off-street, off-street parking shall be provided one spot for each 150 square feet of outdoor. So I want to answer that question. Number two is, if we can talk a little bit about one of the conditions, 7B, talks about the violations for the standards on this section. And I'm wondering if maybe we shouldn't expand that to be a little more detailed as one of the conditions of moving forward with this? I don't know.
That is existing language with no proposed changes, but...
Okay, so I'll ask Attorney Dave King here, if that's something that maybe we want to consider adding some punch to that?
I'm looking at that language, Mr. Chair. Our office reviewed this, I reviewed this ordinance before it's being presented to you. Was there something specific you had in mind?
No, I'm just going back to what Henry was referring to in terms of, you know, is it first violation warning, second warning, you know, third fine, you know, that kind of thing. Do we want to maybe specify that in this?
No, I don't think we need to. I mean, I can take a look at it separately, we can make sure before it's presented to the city council. This particular provision is talking directly about revoking or denying the permit. I think what the director's referring to is there's, there's separate language that suggests that in the code, that if there's any violations of the code, that that can also be subject to an infraction. So that's, that's located elsewhere in the code, I don't think we need to have that in what's presented to you.
Okay, because I don't think it was in the redlined areas either.
Yeah, I think that's, my guess is that that's somewhere else in the code, which is like general language.
Okay.
Chapter three.
Chapter three.
There you go. So what's in there then? So that answers your concern then about the?
It's sort of two tracks, if you will. There's a.
Yeah, that's all.
Yeah.
Right.
And that's where my follow-up went then, is that we have different ways of looking at it. This language here, it says shall be cause for the city to revoke outdoor dining permit. It's kind of one action.
Yeah, Commissioner, there's two separate tracks. So there's infraction, misdemeanor, criminal, and then there's more administrative remedies, which is revoking the permit. So I think of it as two separate tracks. The shall be cause for is just, you know, I would, I would read that to say that gives the city the option to revoke the permit, we don't have to, but it gives us extra leverage if the notices of violation are not working.
Okay. Would you, by the way, Steve, should we have something in this that says refers to that in the infraction section that we're talking about? I mean, does it need to be, or can we just arbitrarily do that?
Because what the, what the chapter three refers to, chapter three or title three?
I think it might be title three, actually.
I think it's title three. Title three is general language, that any violations of the code in general can be charged as a misdemeanor, or infraction, if it's not specified as a misdemeanor. So every violation of the code potentially is an infraction.
Okay.
So that's what covers this from the criminal perspective.
And I guess going back to what Henry said earlier, as well as, as what we've been kind of talking about in terms of how to enforce it, if it's during the day, it seems to me that the code enforcement officer literally would have, if we go back to page, if we go back to page, actually, page two, where it talks about the draft ordinance, and it requires all these things, just a checklist for that code enforcement officer to just check every box that says, you know, this, that, and the other is happening. And maybe that's how, it's almost like the health department, when the health department goes out and does their 100-question checkoff list, and, you know, you get two or three wrong, and you've got a 90%, but you're still an A, so maybe that would be something maybe to consider, just.
Yeah, so if they're, you know, putting any new structures in for this, so anything on the private property, before they are, they can receive their certificate of occupancy, it does require inspection by city staff. That's not the code enforcement officer, that would be, you know, one of us three, inspecting not only to make sure it complies with any conditions that were added, but also with the standard requirements. That's, actually, a checklist or something, a practice that the staff recently has been developing, because, you know, we have our city code, but it's legal lease sometimes, and to be able to turn into a checklist makes things a lot more swift, and so we've been doing that a lot.
That's what I'm saying, if he just checks off, okay, requires full kitchen, yes, required, you know, but all of a sudden he comes up and says, you know, umbrellas are out there, and advertise, and, oh, no, so, you know, it just kind of gives them a guideline.
Yeah, and I think the nature of us trying to advertise these new regulations that will kind of form a checklist, per se, for the business owners to make sure they stay in compliance as well.
Okay. All right, well, just throwing some thoughts out there, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Does that answer everyone's questions? Are we good? Okay, now, I don't know if we have anybody on the Zoom that had any comments on this? No? Okay. So it looks like the recommendation is to just approve the ZTA and?
Recommend approval.
Recommend approval for the city council. So with that, does anybody want to make a motion?
So moved.
Okay, there's a motion. Second, all in favor of approval of item 4C, aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed, nay? Okay, so that approval is golden at seven to zero. Okay, moving along, we will go to item number 4D, one of, I'm sure, everybody's favorites in tonight's packet. And that will be the discussion and consideration of zoning text amendment, 2023-04, ordinance amending the Lomita Municipal Code Title 11, Planning and Zoning, Chapter 1, Zoning, Article 30, Residential Zones, to update regulations regarding the keeping of hen chickens within the A1 agricultural non-commercial and the R1 single-family residential zones, and that the finding to be exempt from California Environmental Quality Act. And the applicant again is the city of Lomita, and Community and Economic Developer Director Brianna Ridge will be our presentation. So if there's a staff report, if you would please?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
This item is before you tonight because, for several months, this has taken up a lot of staff time, of various staff members, and it is something that the city has only, and I've been here about five months, received calls asking to allow chickens, and not a single complaint about people having chickens. Doesn't mean it's reasons for approval, but it is reasons to bring up the conversation to you all in city council. So we looked at it, and the city code has two single-family zoning districts. One is A1, one is R1. Those used to be pretty different. A1 was more agricultural, larger lots, more allowed on the lot, whereas R1 was the more higher density with, you know, less allowed. And so, over time, those development standards have evolved, to the point that now they have the exact same development standards. We also looked at the uses and the difference between the two zoning districts. A1 permits everything R1 does, and then some, just three of the probably 100 different uses. There's only three different, and those are permitted in A1, not R1. Private tennis club, nursery stock, you know, for plants, and farm pets by right. That farm pets is where chickens would fall under. Now, we figured, okay, what would it take to allow the same for this use that we've been getting a lot, I'm guessing because of the price of eggs, I'm not quite sure for sure, but that's a great, you know, what's the word, trigger, I guess? So we noticed that roosters are technically allowed in some places. That is not something that the city would, would like to continue on. And so the proposed ordinance does include that hens only. To be specific, in case you aren't aware, because I had to look it up myself, roosters are male chickens and hens are female chickens. The roosters are the, for lack of a better word, more obnoxious ones. So this code would only allow hens. So we, we had staff, we all did research on what other cities like ours allow, and we propose an ordinance that really has a conservative end. It's definitely not allowing all kinds of things, like some other cities might. Again, code enforcement is the arm here. One thing I did not include in the staff report, because I thought about it afterwards, was a height limit on coops. And I think we do have a height, or we do have a height limit on accessory structures, but sometimes a coop, as you might see, well, you'll see images in a moment, they're not considered accessory structures permanently attached to the ground, and so I think to have a height of those would be fair. I suggest eight feet, based on the height of other structures allowed in the city. But I would recommend, staff would recommend that when you make your motion to add that. So just to kind of, what this would look like, all the different distance requirements, that's really the bulk of it. So this is to scale. Obviously, the big chicken is not, but that's just so you can see, you know, what this is. But you can see the four little chickens to the left of it. So what this is showing is that the chickens must have, must be enclosed with a roof, and it must be in the rear yard only, can't be in the side yard, can't be in the front yard, rear yard only. These four different distance requirements are intended to relieve of any potential calls of complaints. So first is that any chickens must be located at least 15 feet from a property line. You can see the size of that chicken, as if it were a foot long. So it's to scale in that way. Second is any residential, that includes like residential building, residential zoning district, except on the subject lot, of course. 35 feet from any public street curb, and this really matters for corner lots. And last is 50 feet from anything zoned commercial, any hospital or any school. So, you know, we just heard outdoor dining, well, you wipe that thing, outdoor dining and chickens mix, well, they will be at least 50 feet from each other at a minimum. But if you look at the zoning map of the city, that's pretty copacetic. So just going to kind of scroll through some images of what this looks like in case you aren't familiar, because this was a big learning process for me as well. So once again, we actually looked at 19 other cities, and this is a conservative allowance of chickens in the R1, the same as they are currently allowed in the A1. You probably know some people that have them now. Excuse me. I think that's pretty much it. I'm available for questions. I'm going to scroll through these photos. They come in all shapes and sizes. We do have a provision in our code that it must be of similar design to the single-family home that it's associated with, like you see in this photo here.
So that's a junior ADU.
They went into a lot of detail. But you can see the height here, that's, you know, five, six feet maximum.
Yeah, that's another junior ADU.
And so just to reiterate, yeah, hens only, these are the distances, that's, you can go into that if you'd like, but available for questions.
Oh, okay, so thank you, Brianna, for that. So, does anybody have any questions for Brianna? Monica?
Yeah, that's a pretty fancy house.
Yeah.
Better than some homes.
Well, remember, you don't want to be all down to the ground where they can't walk around and, you know, they get plumped up that way. Yeah. Brenda, any questions?
Yeah, I do. Having been on farms and taking care of many chickens and roosters and goats and cows and all that good stuff, who's going to enforce? Because, yeah, it's been a talk, everybody wants hen, then everybody wants eggs, everybody, you know? But there's a lot of waste that goes with chickens, and the more chickens you have, the more waste you have. Who's going to enforce that when the smell is bothering someone? Or when the people's chickens get out? Because, I mean, if you go on Facebook, everybody's dog is running the streets and everything. I can just imagine, my chicken's out, you know, and it's a, you know?
Supposed to be on a leash.
Yeah. So I just see a lot of problems. I mean, I'm all for it, I think, you know, but I see a lot of problems with everybody just going, oh, I'm going to get a bunch of chickens, and then you're going to see them going, who wants these chickens? Because, one, hens are pretty noisy when you get a lot of them together. Roosters only are noisy in the morning and late at night. So I see a lot of, you know, I mean, we only have one and a half people that do code enforcement, and I just see where it could potentially cause a lot of problems.
Yeah, so it would be enforced in the same manner that we are currently enforcing it in the A1 zone. There are currently provisions, they're just not as specific, and so that's what this ordinance intends to do, is include provisions that can eliminate or reduce the chances of such complaints, such as the distance requirements, you know, for smell to travel or sound to travel, whatever it might be. Waste is very, that could happen as well. It'd be enforced in the same exact manner, and we do include a maximum of five chickens as well.
Okay. Mike, any questions? Joaquin?
No questions.
Bob? Henry?
No roosters, right?
Correct. Citywide.
We happen to have a rooster over by our house. Somebody's got one, but we don't complain.
You can.
But they do, I don't, you know, I hear him, I tell my wife he serenaded her. And she, now we've got a mockingbird that mocks all night long, sings all night long. He's right out our window, you know? So I tell my wife, go out and kiss him, and maybe he'll go away.
Is he mocking the chicken?
But anyway, so, I love pets, I love pets, so I'm all for people having chickens.
Well, Henry, is your mockingbird mocking the chicken?
Yeah, it could be, trying to outdo the rooster.
Yeah.
And I want to mention one thing, because it's come up a few times, I think it's just good for everybody to know who might be listening in or who's here. The city did have one full-time code enforcement officer, like I mentioned, and then we got a part-time, the past two months, two and a half months she's been with us. A city I've worked for in the past, which is very similar to this one, we had four, in Georgia, we had four full-time code enforcement officers. They were proactive, they had the bandwidth to be able to be proactive. They were out there measuring height of overgrowth, overgrown vegetation, whereas a city like ours and a bunch nearby who don't have four code enforcement officers, and they're of the same size as well, we are reactive at this point. So it would be up to city council if they would like to increase those efforts to become more proactive.
Well, I know in my experience, I've actually had two properties that I'm aware of where they had actually roosters on them, and they were really, really noisy. And one that may still have it, right here behind City Hall, just a few blocks up, the house on 240, 241st, right up the street? Yeah. So down by the old Frog Pond, because that's where it's at, so, just FYI. But anyways, okay, so there's no other commissioner questions? We can begin the public comment portion of this? I don't know if anybody's online? For the big chicken gate? Okay. If that's the case, we'll close the public comment period, and if there's no other comments or questions, I guess I would entertain a motion to approve item number 4D. There's a motion and a second, so we'll do the vote. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay? Okay.
Just to clarify that, for the staff report, we're going to add eight-foot height limit on coops.
Yeah, you mentioned, I have coop height as an eight-foot limit.
Perfect.
Okay. Okay, moving on.
Sorry, who was the mover in the second on that one?
I believe Commissioner Santos was the.
Where's the second?
A motion, and Commissioner Steinbeck did the second.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, moving on to item 4E, discussion and consideration of Zone Text Amendment number 2023-05, ordinance amending various sections of the Lomita Municipal Code Title 11, Planning and Zoning, to specify regulations in compatibility with adopted ordinance number 839, regulating planned development, residential developments, and finding that the action is exempt from California Environmental Quality Act, and the applicant again is the city, and again, the presentation is by Economic Director Ridge. So Brianna, if you can do that presentation for us, please?
Yes, thank you. This is purely a cleanup ordinance. There is no substantive change, nothing tangible is changing should city council end up adopting this ordinance. But what's happened is, ordinance number 839 was adopted shortly before I arrived, about six months ago, I want to say. And now that it's been adopted, we have applicants coming in, and as we're trying to apply the code, we're finding some issues where there's inconsistencies. We have ordinance 839, we have the intent, we have everything that's in it. All this draft ordinance does is mirror that in chapter two, because chapter one is planning, excuse me, is all about the development standards, and chapter two is about the subdivision of the lots itself. So I, very brief staff report, if you have any questions, I am available.
Okay, thank you for that brief report. Does any commissioner have any questions for Brianna at this time? Monica?
No, thank you.
Brenda? Mike?
We trust you.
Joaquin? Bob? Henry? Okay. Seeing no questions, we can begin the public comment portion of the hearing. Is there anybody online for this one? No? Okay. Seeing no one in the audience, we will close the public comment hearing, probably pick it back to a vote. Is there a motion on the floor to approve 4E? Okay, so Commissioner Graff was the motion, and Commissioner Santos was the second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Okay, that passes, thank you. Okay, we can now go to scheduled items, number five, which has got two items, 5A, 22 Annual Progress Report for the General Plan and Housing Element, and it looks like receiving file for the recommendation. Is there a report at all from you for this?
Yeah, so in the adopted housing element, it was stated there will be an annual report on, on just the state of housing in the city, kind of where we're at. So I'm just going to run through this quickly, but also because we seek your input on something very exciting, a lot of you probably already know about. This is the housing element program that requires us to have an informational session annually. So we're doing it right now because the state requires the city to submit an annual, annual progress report on the implementation of the general plan and specifically of the housing element. Those items are just requirements of the state, the housing element has state forms that we fill out, we work with Building and Safety at LA County to get those numbers, and it's purely just reporting out on qualitative and quantitative data. So those are attached to the staff report, but the part of the staff report that I'm here to talk more about is the general plan, something we're very excited about, you've probably heard about it. The city's general plan was actually adopted 25 years ago. For example, where I come from in Georgia, you're required to update that every five years. So this is something that in the past 25 years, there's a lot been going on. There's, downtown Lamede has been developed, you know, and is continuing to be developed. There's obviously been a pandemic. There's been increase in population, increase in housing prices, traffic of all modes of transportation, and even new modes that didn't even exist 25 years ago, like Uber. So in addition, there's been new state mandates. And so the city looks to be able to implement those things in the way that's best for Lamede. So how do we do this? We go through the general plan process. And if you're asking why now, well, this council has allocated funding through a strategic plan. We recently got updated the safety element and the housing element. We have three new staff members in the planning division. We're ready to work on it. And as you've seen tonight, there are some holes in code or some maybe problems with some outdated code. There's a use in there. I had to Google. I didn't even know what it was, a mail-order house, because it's not of this generation. In addition, the requirement to rezoma 2024, these are requirements of the state. If you see the pink items on the left, those are the four elements of the general plan that will be updated by this general plan update process. Of note, economic development implementation will be woven throughout the other four. They're not going to be deleted. They're going to be updated within the other four as they, definitely a priority for the city. This is the process. So just real quick, I'll just go over the top part, top-left part. There's going to be a lot of ideas bouncing back and forth, and things pushed off to other board members. And what those three groups are is the GPEC, which is the General Plan Advisory Committee. That's made up of, no planning commissioners are on it, but there might be some from the, because you all have your own role. But there may be some members of the other boards that we have, like Traffic and Safety Commission. There might be, you know, ideally is a good cross-section of the city. Multiple generations, multiple lengths of time people have lived in the city, representatives from other, entities such as FIRE, PD, school. The development community will have representation as well as illustrate, real estate, not illustrate industry. That is one of the three groups they will be needing the most often as we direct the firm that is selected by the RFP process. Next is the TAC, the Technical Advisor Committee. That's city staff who can say, "All right, yep, this is feasible. All right, this is what that will take. We think it makes sense to prioritize this way," and kind of feed back and forth on each other. And then perhaps the most important group, Planning Commission. You all, as long, as well as city council, will actually be making decisions on what gets approved, what gets carried forward, what gets, in a way, I guess vetoed by you all, but I don't see that really happening. But basically, nothing will get approved without going through you all first. I bring this up to say that we will have a GPEC formed this summer, likely. So the RFP process, we did release it through authorization, after authorization by city council, and we're currently in the interview stage. We had three responses to the RFP that are, it's obviously a very big undertaking, so it's groups of firms who have responded. We have one more interview tomorrow, and then we will selecting a consultant and taking that before city council for them to award the item. With that, the GPEC will be formed with, you know, at the, carrying forth of the consultant. They will be driving this project. They will be working closely with you all and city staff. But we won't be forming the GPEC until they are on board and we have a plan moving forward. So if you know anyone who might be interested in the GPEC, you can let me know. You can email me, verbally tell me. That's something that will be happening probably this summer and last a year or so. So that concludes the presentation.
Well, let me clarify that. Interested in the GPEC, that means that nobody on this commission can be on that GPEC. Is that correct?
Yeah, because you have your own role.
All right, I just want to make sure, because everybody's eyes lit up and said, "Ooh, we want to do it."
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's why I brought it up. Just want to make sure. Okay, just want to make sure.
The, I'm sorry.
Council's gonna pick the consultant? Or you guys are?
We went through the RFP process, which included, okay, five or six different things that get evaluated in the interview and reviewing the RFP in their process. Staff will evaluate them and make a recommendation to city council. Ultimately, city council will select the firm.
Having some experience in receiving the information from the consultants on two previous attempts here, I do have some concerns about performance in the past, so if you want to talk offline, I'm happy to.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Well, let's see. We don't have anything else for that. Is there any questions for Brianna on that presentation? Monica?
No.
Brenda? Mike?
No.
Joaquin? Bob?
No.
Henry? You've been through it on another level, right?
No, GPEC, that was before.
Oh, okay, okay.
On this commission was on the, was anybody on the 98 when they first did it? Monica, you were?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was.
Were you on it too, Bob? Okay.
A little one afterwards, right?
Yeah.
Right, right.
You know, and this is just, it's kind of off what this is, but I went through the housing element. I'm going through it. I'm still finishing. I'm an appendixy. But anyway, you said that the economic development part of this that we had as an element when you guys were first on it, and I've been reading through it, and so far I haven't seen too much in the housing about economic development. But that being said, I end up calling Joe St. Quenna, who was on, I think he led it, didn't he?
He wasn't the chair or not? Was it Joe? Who was the chair at that? I was chair at one of them.
I don't remember, Joe.
He was on the first one.
I was the second one. I was, right.
I know, yeah, he was, Lamede-friendly folks.
Okay.
Yeah.
But he wasn't on GPEC?
No, he wasn't on GPEC, but he was attended and spoke.
Okay.
That's my recollection.
Okay, because I just called him because I knew he was on it, and he doesn't live here anymore. He's in Tennessee. So he's moved out. And, but he was sharing with me why the initial GPEC, because they weren't required to do an economic development element.
Oh, yeah.
According to what I've read, it said no.
The staff has all of them. They can, they still have all the data.
Do they recommend that back then?
Yeah, that's correct, that it's not actually a state requirement to have it.
Yeah, I didn't think so.
But staff finds it important enough to be woven.
Right, and that's what he said. He said it wasn't required of us then, but it was a huge focus we had because we, we talking about economic development in the city. And you know, when you look at that housing development, we're doing extremely low income, low income, moderate income, and then you go above that. That all has to do with economics, you know, trying to raise people up out of those particular lower and extremely low incomes. Well, economic development in the city is gonna help do that. But I don't see that in anywhere in the housing element so far that I've read, that we're talking about how we would develop Lamede to help raise those people out of those particular economic situations they're in so they improve and be able to then, you know, buy more expensive homes and be able to meet their bills and, you know, everything else. So I think, and this is my opinion, that an economic development element is important because we're trying to develop our city to help our citizens, and especially those that are in those type of positions. I don't, I think it wasn't, we didn't have a ton of people that way. But we had a good, more than I thought we had, you know, here in the city that are in that kind of situation, that live in our city, and they're just barely getting by, you know? And it's a shame that they are, but how can we improve through our city their situation? So that's why I think, you know, if we, if we throw that out with the bathwater, we have nothing to look at for a mission or a strategy or a plan or anything to do with how we help those people get out of that situation, you know?
I really appreciate that.
So I'm, I'm suggesting that we not throw that out, and that we, the focus would be, how can we help our own people that are in those situations to get out of those situations?
That's great feedback, especially I appreciate the history provided on it as well. It is not set in stone that it will be woven into the others. That's just what the RFP included, the recommendation of Sherry Reploidsman, who was my predecessor. But ironically, something we talked about recently was, do we continue with that or do we keep it its own, its own element? So I really appreciate that input.
I think it's important that we, we try to, as commissioners and the city council members and staff, to try to help people who are in situations like that to, to get out of those situations.
Definitely, thank you.
And how can we do that? We don't want to just throw money at it, because that doesn't work. We've been doing that for years, and it hasn't worked. It's gotta be more than that. So that's just something to think about. I've got ideas, but I'll save those for another time.
All ears.
Okay, so does anybody else have any more comments or suggestions or recommendations for Brianna? If not?
I have one, kind of since he brought up the housing thing. When I was going through the charts, I don't know if that's, I, we are, I'm looking for the right word, and I, everything that comes to mind, I can't say. We need to really focus on our very low-income housing units. I mean, we're horrible. And part of that is because we're allowing developers to come in and say, "This is all I'm gonna do, and you're gonna approve it." And I hope that as a commission and city, we can change that because that number, I mean, I was appalled. I mean, we have all these very high income, and when you look at the medium value, I mean, it's just, it's terrible. I mean, it's just terrible. And when we have the opportunity to require new developments in the city, and we're not saying, "Look, you gotta provide for the very low and the low income," because unfortunately, a lot of our city is falling into that category just because of the way that the times are. And, and it's just, I just think that when they come before us, we should be able to say, "Whoa, you know, you're only, you're only required to do one unit out of 10. But we want you to do one low, one very low," or something, and kind of take back the control that we have, or we're gonna really be in a world of hurt the next time they say we gotta build units, and they're all gonna be very low, and we're gonna get these subpar divisions and housing units in here. And it's, I just see the writing on the wall. So that's since he had brought up the housing thing, that's, because those numbers are terrible. Sorry.
Okay. Anything else? Mike, any comments? Joaquin?
Yes.
Bob, anything else? Henry? Okay. Okay, well, thank you again, Brianna, for that, and maybe either Bob or Henry can work with you offline if they have any comments or suggestions, recommendations, et cetera. Okay, moving along, 5B, communications regarding city council actions.
Yeah, so just real quick, there's been three items from city council since we all last met in March. The target initiated designated parking, short-term parking, that did get introduced on first reading last week at city council meeting. The second reading is next week and could be adoption. The housing ordinance related to the housing element requirements that did, it actually goes into effect April 20th, I believe. But that did get approved on second reading by city council. And then last is the murals. You are aware, we did a whole presentation on murals at a recent city council meeting where there was a lot of support to bring forth an ordinance that actually allows it because even though it doesn't look like it driving around the city, they're actually currently only allowed in the industrial areas. And so there's, it's hard to enforce when the code isn't what's happening or what the city would desire to have. And so they did direct staff to move forward after we did a bunch of research on like 20 other cities. So that'll be coming to you May or June, probably.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
I know you guys took this a while back, right? From the OREO thing?
Yeah.
Or went to the city? No? Oh, okay.
No.
Then my question's irrelevant for us. It's, it has to go to the council. Thanks.
Okay. Item 6, other matters, A, staff announcements, anything?
I don't have anything else at this time.
You mentioned the other code enforcement officer is the half, so was that, when did that actually happen?
She began work on January 30th.
Oh, January, okay. So part-time code enforcement?
That's correct, on contract.
Right. January 30th, okay. And planning commissioner items. Let's start off. Monica, anything?
Yes. At the last city, I don't know if the last city council, they were talking about the districting and the five districts in Lamede, and they came up with various scenarios, and it's like chasing your tail is what's going on because it goes from, "This has too many people, and we move it over here," and that's, but that makes this people out with low population. My question is, the idea being that each district has a city council member on the council. And if a district does not have anybody running, what happens? I wonder if the city attorney can, I'm just curious. If nobody stands up, does that mean we have four? I mean, it's crazy. It just, it's, we're so small, it's ridiculous.
Your chickens can go there.
Only roosters. No, I'm just curious if nobody is elected or comes forward from the district.
Yeah, I, I'd have to look into that, Commissioner, and get back to you on that. I'm sorry, I don't know the answer. I haven't been working on that ordinance personally, so.
I don't even know who's in your area or what.
I'm guessing that there's some sort of provision that would either allow the person who's currently in the seat to just continue on if no one comes to-
There's nobody living.
Right, right, but there must be, I'm thinking that the ordinance has some sort of fallback position that maybe would open it up to everyone. I'm thinking that, you know, the council would have to function with every seat filled, so I'm guessing there's some sort of fallback position, but don't quote me on that. I haven't been working on that.
I would be interested to hear what it is.
Yeah, let me see what I can find out on that.
And I know there's gonna be another hearing Tuesday as well.
Yeah, because they came up with a fourth plan, yes. Thank you.
Okay, Brenda?
I have nothing.
Mike, anything?
I have nothing.
Joaquin? Bob?
No.
Henry? My quick comment on what Monica just said, would it be appointment or by a special election if there was a district without a council member in it?
I don't, I don't know. Let me, let me find out what the proposal is, and I can let the commission know for your certification.
Okay, very good. So with all of that, we have last item, which is item 72, council meetings for the month of May, May 2nd. Who wants to go to the May 2nd council meeting?
Because it's one of the rare occasions where I'm-
In town? Ah, great.
But I'm gonna follow that with a question.
Oh.
I love it when he's back there pushing the light on for me. Good job. Why do we attend the council meeting? I wondered that when I was on the council.
That's a good question.
I mean, are we legally obliged to, or is-
I think it was just so that you would get the feel of what the council's doing in person and hear what's happening.
Because staff reports back to us, and they're never gonna ask you a question because you can't answer on behalf of them.
Oh, right, right, right. I mean, we've all been to many, many council meetings. I don't know. Henry, do you have a take on that?
I always wondered why.
Can somebody research that?
Can we ask staff to find out? If there is a starting war, I don't think there's anybody that wants to go.
We absolutely will find out and report back.
And let me know before May 2nd.
You know, it's interesting, though, because we all get copies of the agenda.
Right. Okay?
And if there's something I'm interested in, I go.
Right, right.
Or Zoom.
And then on that same subject, if, I don't know if this is the right time, maybe it should have been commissioner items. I'm gonna be out of town for the next meeting, and sort of. I'm gonna be on an airplane. I can't Zoom. But if something happens where I can bump a flight, I may be on the ground in time, so.
So you're saying you're gonna miss the May 8th? Okay.
Is it, is it true that he can't Zoom now because you have to be in person?
I think that's what council started doing, so we would follow suit.
I mean, he could, he could watch, but I don't-
Then I'm not gonna do it.
If I may, it gets super complicated now because you have to post where he is. If you're in an airport, that might be difficult, and you have to post ahead of time, like a day before at least, I think, or I'm not sure if it's when-
It's easier if I just don't attend. If I don't attend, I'm not gonna watch because-
Otherwise, you'll have to open up a whole thing and chat Bob and, you know, figure out where you are.
Well, I'm sure you will.
Have a good trip. Have a good trip.
Have a good trip. It's that, I don't want to be on my, that destination wedding thing.
Maybe we won't have any items, you never know.
True.
The council is going to get back, right?
Yeah. Okay.
Nope, that means we're having a meeting.
Did you say no, as in no items, or no, no, we will have it?
There are two items, I think, slated for the May meeting.
All right. Okay, so then we're talking the next meeting was May 16th. Who's got some time for that May 16th meeting? Anybody? Henry?
I have the 18th this month.
Okay, anybody else?
I'll let anybody else take the shot. Not that I'm not willing to do it, if nobody else will do it, I'll do it.
I'm saying if anybody wants to go, then it's open.
If nobody else will do it, I'll do it.
Okay, Joaquin will go for the record. Linda?
You can Zoom on council.
Yeah, you can Zoom if you want, unless you're at the airport. No, that's true. In fact, how are you going to let us know? Are you going to send out a mass email to commissioners about that?
About the requirement for attendance? Yeah, we can.
About what?
Requirement for attending a council meeting, she's going to send out an email. Okay. With that, I come to the very last item, which is adjournment, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yo.
Second?
Yo.
Okay, all in favor, aye, nay? Okay, motion to adjourn, it is exactly 7:30, 7:30 on the dot. Thank you, everybody.